He provided us a written.
Is there anything on there?
I do have a question from that before and is who's on that, we were just talking about who's on the Stormwater Management Board this committee because it's been sitting at this state of their reviewing the draft for about ten months now, maybe nine months. So apparently there isn't much going on. And she indicated, go ahead.
That the last meeting I went to, it was just myself, he, George Jobnott, and then the gentleman from Keller. There was three of them.
Do they have to, when somebody came back ready?
That sounds like a good decision. That sounds like a good idea.
Does anybody want to volunteer to be on the Stormwater Management Board? Does anybody want to volunteer for it?
I think you're talking maybe to your idea of Aaron was on it.
Do you have the end of Stormwater minute?
Thank you.
Before we get to consent agenda, I just want to read something. I'm going to read it every time. Even if we disagree about everything, we can still be kind to each other. All right. Okay, we had the executive session on February twenty seventh for discussing office safety.
Wait, are we on the consent agenda or have we skipped down to some other item?
No, since we had an executive session on February twenty seventh between meetings, you just announced that there was an executive session in Keller on February twenty seventh to discuss personnel concerns of office safety.
Okay, we do need to move up some of the new business because Mike has to leave. Okay, so we're at the approval to get votes for basic safety for the Borough Office. Any comments on that or?
I'm not sure what was determined at the executive session. I don't know what came out of there. I wasn't even to attend.
To make the office a little bit more safe, that people can't just walk in and out. All they have to do is go through that little swinging door.
Nothing really major right now. The door to the right is like a swinging door. There's no security at all there. And it's not some major update. Just wanted to increase the right side there.
Like by putting a latch on it or a lock on that?
Something or, yeah, and I think we want to do some height to it. It needs probably about another foot, I think. I would, I would recommend that if everybody's approval, we could get estimates on what it's going to cost. Then we can really see what's going on.
So you want to make the doorway higher and that somehow going to help our safety if you just put a lock on it? Isn't that going to, what's that going to result? I'm trying to understand.
If you, if you look at it and you start at the left side as you're back there, you've got a height like this. It's the new part that they put in there. And then as soon as it comes where the wheelchair accessible is, right after that, it drops off. It goes real low.
Are we in the Borough Office or the chambers?
Yes, the Borough Office.
Okay, yeah, there's a, there's a gate there. And what happens there?
Well, basically, basically right, right now, there's just no, if anybody could walk in there whether they want it, just, it's a free, you know. And it's not the major, it's just the idea that it would upgrade the security just a little bit.
Now, you can still, you're still going to be able to walk in like you always do. Once you walk into the office and you're standing in front of the counter, there's a swinging gate door there. They're talk, we're talking about making that, that area more secure. Could you figure, you have all females working, working in there. You have them collecting money in there. It just need, it just needs upgraded to be a little bit more secure for the girls. That's all.
What do you pose them in? What's the problem?
Why don't you guys just put like an office or something there during your next meeting?
It's not that.
So it would be making it higher and it would be putting a lock or latch or something so we can't reach over and open it.
We need to put a jam up, put a regular door, put a door lock with a latch on it.
Well, I think we should make clear to the ceiling, like a higher wall type that runs along there so that there's an actual door.
Yeah, just put a jam across the top and down the sides and put a regular door in. And then you could lock the damn thing. They want somebody else. By then they could jump over the counter.
Well, that's why I said, that's why I thought about doing a wall, like you said about a regular sized door. Not taking the wall clear to the ceiling, but taking the wall to just above the door, going to, the whole, going across.
Just make a thing like Sarah now with plexiglass. Yeah. You can see, you can see, you can lock it. You can lock the door.
Does anybody want to make the motion?
I make a motion that we get proposals for security upgrades to the office.
Anybody second?
Yes, when you make, when you say security upgrade, are we just talking about what you mentioned? Or are we, are there other things that you're talking about?
A wall type thing and with a, like a door.
Oh, so you're going to put a whole wall in?
Out of plexiglass so you can see through.
Yeah.
Right there now, just bring it out to the door.
Bring it out to the door.
All those in favor?
Who was the second because everybody knew?
Well, I'm not going to, yeah, I didn't know we had a second, so. Oh, then I went to discussion. And then you could now, under our new rules, you've got to ask public comment before you go.
Public comment, anybody?
I agree with security and I said to them before about security.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Call for a vote. Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Anyone, ask if anyone's opposed.
Oh, does anybody oppose? Okay, that could be the approval for advertisement for hiring a full-time police officer. That's supposed to be through civil service.
Not.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Lawyer's right here. And I just asked at the last meeting for us to follow the guidelines and the rules and the regulations of civil service, which has never been done. It is.
Is it a civil service issue to advertise? Because I thought you, civil service did the interview part.
Civil service is supposed to do the, all of it. It's supposed to advertise.
Why hasn't it then? Why hasn't it then?
Well, well, that's interesting because over the years, it's never been done right. Ever.
Then if you're civil service, can you make the motion to advertise?
Yet after we, we meet and, yeah, after you meet and, and things, first of all, I think we do civil service and I'm just going to be transparent. First of all, we have three officers that were hired before or were supposed to be hired. There were things that were done that was inappropriate and not supposed to be done under civil service guidelines. And those officers, I've gotten mixed things. One officer that didn't make the medical, another officer that a test was done and they said, no one knows. And I wasn't told who or what test that they gave. No one told me who was there when it was given. And that officer really should be able to come back. And then there's a list that those three officers should be able to be on the list and be able to come back and offer a position in Mount Union. And if there was a veteran on that list, he's supposed to rise to number one. So there's a lot of things that need to be straightened out and done correctly.
Do we have last year's list? I assume somebody has last year's list.
I have the border of the African.
I think we do not have a current list.
Well, those three would be on the list.
Well, the three are, isn't that three left?
I don't think any of them are available.
Well, we know that you send your civil service to contact them.
Two of them didn't pass the physical.
But who was there for the physical? You're not supposed, all that stuff is supposed to be done at the academy so that then you know that stuff is done correctly and it's done fairly.
Those two officers did do PT at IUP.
What if that officer, they could, didn't run here in Mount Union and he missed it by twenty seconds?
IUP. They also, after he failed up there, they also tested him here to see if he was making any progress to send in what's the next group.
Who, who got the information? Because I've never seen it on civil service, civil service and that's a problem. I mean, if you want, we're going to be honest and fair and upright. I mean, it should be, you know, civil service should have been involved in the whole process and I was not, so.
So if there was a list of three people, then the third person has to be contacted if the others failed out, right? They are still on that list.
No, we, we don't have anybody qualified on the list. Our list is exhausted.
When you say no one's qualified, according to whose criteria? If the civil service wasn't involved other than one person, which is not a quorum.
The people that were, okay, I heard number one thing. Find mine too. Excellent person. None of them that we tried to hire would cut it, could cut it.
Well, when you say.
It was, it was their, it was their choice that they couldn't make it. It wasn't, it wasn't ours.
You say their choice, but it's a civil service process.
No, I agree, I agree with what you said. We're good candidates.
But we didn't go through the civil service process properly. That's what I'm hearing. That's the concern, Tim, is that it has to go through that process.
Okay, we'll go forward. Can you go through the civil service from start to finish?
First of all, civil service rules are hopelessly out of date. They need to be updated. Second of all, those rules, I agree with Marley, have never been formally followed. They haven't, basically, the things that have been done that have been required, but not down to the last detail. The whole theory of civil service is, is that they, they produce, they do it all. They produce the list. They advertise, they produce the list, they supervise the testing, they get the results. They then determine if you pass or fail, you get the score. And then there are veterans preference points that have to go on. And there are certain rules that if you're a first, a veteran and this is your first job, you, you rise to the top of the list. So that list is then given to council for selection of the top choice. Council does have a limited right to interview at the end of the process. And then from that list, they make the final recommendation. That's kind of the theory of how this should go. So in order to accomplish that, the Civil Service Commission needs to authorize that we advertise to get the full-time officers.
That, that's only if the last list has been exhausted. And that's still the question, Larry. Is there anyone left? If there were three officers and two, have we reached out to the third?
I don't know the answer to that.
And I don't know the answer to that either. That's what Marley's asking. It seems important. We don't want to not give someone an opportunity.
No, everybody, everybody has their opportunity. That's what we're saying.
All very often.
Yes.
That's what you say, but we haven't even seen the list that was created from last year. The council.
And if, if, if that list could be produced and that they can just verify that none of those candidates are available, that we could get a new list done.
Do I have a list? I just have the applications. I mean, I can provide that.
Well, Connie.
Who, who did it?
No, I wasn't involved in any of it.
I know.
So where's the information?
Do we have?
From Connie. She's civil service. She's the only one that showed up.
Connie, Marley.
She's the only one that notified. Don't say she's, we're going to get back to her right now. She's the only one that notified.
But I did get to the show.
And I chair civil service.
She's accurate.
So you're saying Connie has the information. That's what you're saying?
I don't know. Well, because nobody else does.
We ain't even seen Connie.
Yeah, no one has her phone number.
So, well, there needs to be a meeting called of the Civil Service Commission, which is Jeanette, Connie, and Marley's our chair.
And none of us have her phone number.
I do.
So who's going to?
I have a team.
Okay, but going forward, can you get the advertisement stuff started?
I got a break.
You see, when we, after we, after we meet.
After they, after the list is produced and it's assured all three candidates are no longer valid. That's what the list last year was about.
Well, I don't really know what to say on that.
It's like you have to wait until they advertise until they meet.
Do we have a budget for nothing? Please, officers, do we budget one, two? Four.
Four.
But then we have to.
One more he time Connie.
Okay, if you just could get, um, beat and get that, you know, for enough freedom to go on now. Yeah, it sounds like it's Connie's number and I.
And like if the list, like just technically, if the list is exhausted and you're satisfied with that and you want to authorize at your meeting to advertise, you don't have to wait till the next council meeting. It can go in.
Yeah, if we approve it tonight, we have to prove it with that caveat.
Okay, all right. So does anybody want to make a motion for hiring a full-time police officer after the civil service does their checking and recommendations?
We'll make a motion that we advertise for new officer pending the, the civil service.
I second.
All those in favor?
Hold it pending comments around the publisher.
So is this officer going to be daytime? We don't need another invisible nighttime officer.
That's really a.
That's a very good question. Does anyone know what their hours would be?
For, you know, if one of the other current officers wants to do daytime, but we need a daytime officer. So there's somebody in the station during the day. People can get accident reports and stuff, other business.
Does anybody know what they want to hire for?
Well, it would have to be, it had to be second and third shift because we're a lot in compliance right now and two officers from nine P M. to three A.
Okay, I'm compliant. You have two officers from nine P M. to three A.
So to do what you're saying, which we've awesome, we need to hire two.
So what extension of hours will this grant to hire another officer? Or would strictly get us back in, I'm, I'm asking, or would strictly get us back in compliance? I'm just asking. Or would we still be, be five P M. for one officer and, like, I don't, I think that's how it works, right? Somebody comes in at five, somebody comes in at seven.
Yeah, now that, with four officers, they'll give us some daylight, but not a lot.
Well, that's what we're asking. What is it going to give us?
Yeah, you're, you're talking with four officers. You still have four daylights open at least.
Four of seven or?
Seven to five.
No, four of seven days I was referring to.
Yeah, yeah, four out of seven.
So you are getting an increase in daytime hours, but not full-time coverage.
Correct.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make the motion?
Big motion's made, seconded, promised made.
All those in favor?
I.
All right. Oppose? Consent agenda.
Well, there's another new business I didn't see. We're doing this mic. I assume you're.
Okay, I didn't see that. Okay, approval for changing the monthly count, council meetings to second Wednesday of each month. Now, I do know that your water already does not want to do that.
Can you give us some insight of what the request is about, why we're looking to change this?
It's for when financials are run on the Wednesday. The first Wednesday of the month falls too close to when the other month ends to get the reports and everything done and going.
Um, that's not true. You can ask Taylor.
The reports get done and I just, Tristan never complains. She's the one that runs the reports. And to be, I don't mind. No, it's fine. It's on board. I was just going to say, no one comes to pick up their packet early anyway, except for Cheryl. So it really is neither here nor there about the financial report, did you need?
So I just, like, from my own selfish perspective, maybe not being here would be more fun. But I have meetings and monthly meetings and they're mostly in the first fifteen days of the month. So if I switch to the second Wednesday, I'm conflicting with two other standing meetings that I have to attend not every time, but partially. So I'm going to get into some schedule issues. And the whole reason I agreed to do the authorities work is because the authority can meet at three thirty. I can go to Bellows for supper, which I enjoy, and then I come here for the, the meeting. So I, I had no vote, but it creates schedule issues for me, just so council's aware of it.
Can't we just get rid of what?
Or, or not do it.
Well, no, I mean, it's on the agenda.
You just have to, you can move for a motion. If no one motions, it'll die for a lot.
Does anybody make a motion to have the monthly meeting changed to second Wednesday?
Motion dies.
Motion dies. Or approve that and then use to advertise whatever way. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions out there for, on the consent agenda? Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda without, with any exceptions for change. Do you have a second?
Who's second?
All those in favor?
Who was the second? Was it Steve or Mike? Thank you.
I did.
I think she did that first. Is there any public comment on consent agenda, which is administrative items? Seeing none, then we'll note that for the record. Now, old business.
Okay, old business, forestry biz?
Yes, the forestry committee met on the date that was indicated at the last meeting that they wouldn't meet. And we did, in your package, you'll find a little chart that we put together that we just compare the two foresters that provided their information or the bids timely to, for, for that purpose. And the forestry, the forestry committee contacted references and on the one that was preferred and by unanimous vote would like to make a recommendation that we bring onboard T V Wilderness Consultants as our forestry, forestry company. And you'll see on the chart the reasons, some of the reasons why that are, that are stated within there.
Did you get the two references?
We got three references actually. Yeah. And that information was provided to the committee as well. And they were, they were very positive.
So your recommendation is T V Wilderness?
T V Wilderness Consultants is from the forestry and tree committees. And that's Joan, myself, Erin, Taylor, and Rick Walters.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve and let T V Wilderness be the forester?
T V Wilderness is the name of the company.
T V Wilderness.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
No, we have to ask a public comment and then we have to.
Public comment.
Well, I have a question. What's the difference between the two?
Well, they decide. Yeah, they're both foresters. One had a little bit more experience, but that wasn't the key element to that. The key element was that the T V Wilderness would come out and walk the land with our foreman and then they would tell us what they proposed to cut. And then they would go out and get bids for that. And then we would, as long as the bid is of a minimum value that was determined, then that's who would be selected by the cutting job. So that was the big reason.
Okay. And this is not the company we had before?
Correct.
Any additional public comment?
What was the cost differences between the two companies?
No real cost difference. They both have a ten percent commission. That was the same on both of their bids. One of them has an additional fee of fifty dollars an hour if they come out. And then there was a decline to sell the timber. And the other one had a similar arrangement, but there's essentially no cost difference at all. So this wasn't about money. Any other questions?
Anybody, council, have any questions?
Should I, should I be provided with my sixty day notice and then I'm done?
You will be. Thank you. If it's approved.
Anybody want to make a motion to row with T V Wilderness?
We already had the motion.
Seconded, discussion occurred. You can call for final vote.
Final vote. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, negative. I'll oppose.
Nicole's opposed. There's one. Anyone else oppose? So it'd be one in the negatives or else it'd be positive that motion is fair.
Motion's fair.
The old business, after the presentation of the petition, council needs to conduct a public hearing. And we're just looking for a date from council to conduct that hearing for, and, and before the time of the public hearing, I would do a proposed ordinance so that that would be available for the public. The council will look at to get some idea of what they would be voting on. So you have that as a discussion form.
It went really well tonight, having the five o'clock public hearing for, which will come later in the agenda, before this meeting, but that's just an idea.
So would council want to do, are you saying next month we would do it on the, the seventh?
I don't know where that date is. That's just a suggestion if anybody else likes to.
Or the eighth. No, the seventh April.
It's the non, wait, the second.
The second, excuse me, yeah. The second of April would be the date.
Is there any objection to us doing it on the second of April then?
And I, we'll go through it at the hearing, but no one who is elected this year to whatever term is being offered, some two, some four, no one is asked to lead. They would fill out that full term even if it's four years.
Five o'clock, that's the hearing on the, we have to have a public hearing on the day of council, sorry. Any other comments? Go to committee report. Nicole does have, do you know the police report? I didn't.
It should be in your pocket.
Okay, yeah. I thought that's the one he said that you were going to go over.
No, I haven't.
All right, committee report. Mark, Cheryl?
Yes, Marley and I just agreed to have a meeting for the Parks and Rec Committee and that'll be on Friday, March twenty first at two P M. at the Borough Council Chambers. And anyone is welcome. And anyone is welcome to attend. Um, Marley and I are the only Borough Council members on that committee right now, so...
Three o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock on March twenty first.
Two o'clock on March twenty first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Street, did you have anything else?
No, I'm Tarks. No, sorry.
Yeah, I'm gonna get with Erin and, uh, Alec and go over things you wanna see accomplished in the spring, this year, summer, so... You know, we get that.
Financial, with Joan? No, with Ford. Ordinance, I've, I've still asked Taylor to see if we had a ordinance for people putting yard sale signs up, and I still haven't been able to find it. And the other one that I did look at is...
Are you talking about like handbills on poles?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we had an ordinance on that. Who's the chair of the ordinance?
Me, well, no, I actually have to take somebody else, but, yeah, I can't find it.
Yeah, I actually have a copy from the...
You do have one?
Yeah.
I don't, we know that we have that.
We don't have one, but I, I have...
We did one from Rowan's for the Borough, but I can't even...
I know one people stood.
Alright, 'cause, yeah, I don't know.
So we don't have one right now?
Like, utility poles, not loving their staples or anything. I think we more or less said since we didn't have a roll, it was, it was staples, but like, taped for anything, and they need to come down like that day, like, they have the sale, and it's over, and they need to take it down.
So we're gonna pay for an ordinance to be developed?
I don't know.
Oh.
Just discussing it. I can't find an ordinance, so there's...
There's no ordinance.
Is there a need for one? Somebody complained to you, yes, you don't wanna... Then I even looked it up, to see if we had one. Does anybody feel like we should do that?
I think it's more important, something we worry about.
Okay, all right, then that's... I think that's done. All right, um, buildings, usually Alec, he has buildings, he'll be going up. Okay, actually, nothing on buildings. Safety, Nicole?
Um, we're just working, gonna be working with Tim and working on the, uh, safety upgrades to the Borough office.
Anybody have any questions, Carol? Personnel, is Mike?
Um, I had spoken with, um, Nicole and Steve. I hadn't scheduled a meeting yet because of the change of shifts at work. Um, but I will get ahold of them tomorrow, Friday, and we'll schedule a meeting soon.
Planning Commission?
Uh, my name's Captain Wilson. Um, we had the, uh, planning commission meeting. Actually, we had it before the meeting last month, so this might sound a little redundant because we covered a lot of it in the last Borough meeting, uh, with everything being rescheduled. Um, the comprehensive plan, we had the public hearing this evening at five, uh, P M. Uh, there's supposed to be an adoption of it, uh, come up later tonight.
Um, no, that's not tonight.
Oh, not tonight.
Do you want me to report on it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, we had the public hearing at five P M. We definitely had a few members of the public there. They had some input to give. Um, we'll just take a look at whether anything needs to be changed in the final draft, um, to see if there's any improvements that need to be made. And then there was a, um, there was a draft of a resolution given to us from Macon Engineering, and there's a couple of, few dates that need to be updated into it. Um, the earliest it would come to this group for, um, the resolution and adoption would be at the next monthly meeting.
Thank you. All right, uh, the, the parking study. Um, Nathan and I got together, we did maps, got them printed out. I'm now putting together a list of information that people need to look for and jot down so they know exactly what, um, everything they need to be looking for. Um, like, if there's signs there, who owns it, if it's one-way parking, or, I mean, if they're parking just on one side of the street, or both sides of the street, it's just one example. Uh, those maps and everything will be handed out at our next meetings and ready to go. We were waiting for warmer weather. We didn't want anyone to hear it cold. Um, and then, uh, we talked about the reduction of the Borough Council members. Um, Nathan and Cheryl, what's the other, we did the, uh, the petition. Nathan went and got his signatures, and he is to speak on that, I believe?
I think we already discussed it.
Yeah, because things have moved. And, um, we also had a discussion about, uh, alcohol, uh, about not even going for the wet. Uh, there was also a petition going around about that with Nathan. Um, I think that's when, I think he's getting everything he needs for that, um, to be put on ballot, and he's moving along with that. Uh, we had, um, Dwight at the meeting last month, which we also worked the last Borough meeting about the corporate setbacks. We've been getting together. I gotta call the Nathan County Planning Commission and get some information, um, from Maury about that. We're gonna have it on the agenda for the next, uh, coming up planning commission to speak about. And, and then there's the twenty-fifth anniversary planning. There is a group that's gathered in Hudson County. Um, Patrick Reader was at the meeting, and he gave you the name of a fellow who was in charge of that. I did reach out to him. They have a meeting coming up. I plan on attending it so that we can get involved with this community and help out and be decorated or do something for it.
Do you know when that meeting is?
Yes, it's the same night as our comprehensive meeting, as the planning commission meeting.
Oh, next month?
Then this month.
Oh, this month, okay.
Yeah. So... Next.
If I, if I wanna add to that, um, for the... Every, every county's gonna have a Liberty Bell. And we, it's, uh, like a fiberglass Liberty Bell, kinda like the Goose's, and we had a meeting here, I think, yes, a couple of days ago, and we still don't have a, a actual location, so no community actually took that one. 'Cause the county, we, we most likely will not let down our property. But, um, so we're looking, they are looking for a borough to take the Liberty Bell placement.
I think what you were saying, I think I've been hearing.
So every county in Pennsylvania is gonna get this fiberglass Liberty Bell.
Oh, every county, okay.
Well, no, not the county. It's gonna be in the county somewhere, and they don't have a location yet. So if, as a borough, if you just wanted to reach out and say how many Parkinson's have, and maybe place them out in Union, they would look at that.
George, I brought up at the meeting, uh, that we did have a couple of battlegrounds in the area. Um, one of them being up in Cemeteries, I'm afraid it got put there. No one else would see it. But he mentioned another one also, and I'm gonna get together with George, find out what that is, before the meeting, and see if we can get it locally, and... I like that one. Yeah. Yep, he had a little, I think that would just have a little bit more meaning to it. That's all.
What did you say?
Fire and MS report.
Okay.
Are they, do they send somebody to any more names, Phil?
Yeah, then...
They have a training this evening, so they gave us the paper.
Yeah, Mount Union Fire Company, we ran thirteen calls in the month of January. It accumulated forty-six hours with sixteen different members responding to calls. Our average response time was eight minutes, and we had averaged five personnel per call. There was six calls to Mount Union Borough, two medical lift assistance, one vehicle accident, two inside investigations, one outside investigation. There's two calls to Shirley Township, one an automatic alarm, and one was a medical assist. One called Baytown, a transfer assignment. Two calls to Brady Township, a two-vehicle accident. Two calls to Wayne Township, two building fires. Uh, they're having their banquet this Saturday at six, and they wanted, we thank, want to thank you again for your continued support in Mount Union. Sincerely, Richard Walter, Chief. Maintenance. Did you explain any of these so that the public knows?
I don't have the letter, that I don't look at.
Well...
We plowed NASCAR, take care of their equipment, pretty soon with maintenance on it. Uh, this is the street department, fix some potholes. Yeah, just a lot of repairing stuff after the storms and stuff, you know?
Hey, Erin, the repairs that you did, like the one up on Green Street at South Shaver, oh, no, Green Street in Garber, you guys wait, do you wait for warmer weather to...
Well, the, the ground got sort of saturated there that it's, it's got to dry, it's got to drain. So we gotta let it sink before we replace the road surface.
Thank you.
Water, we had five water leaks this month. Uh, the whole crew went to apply their training class to get certified to fight. And sewer. Worked on a couple pumps and a blow and over.
Thank you. So this is your report?
Uh, the two major things I've been working on, I'll be getting, I wanna get the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that council...
Sorry, I can't discuss this.
If council moves forward, but I'm gonna, the, the two major things I've been working on will be the proposed ordinance to reduce council size, so you can have that for your public meetings, so you can review it, and that gives you your launching point. You can decide on what you wanna do. The second point is, is that the code officer ordinance that we've been going over since last year, I need to put something back in writing for council's consideration. So those will be the two things I'll be prioritizing.
And that's all.
Claire, what's, what's up with the, uh, code ordinance?
That's putting the code officer for the O I S number in under the Police Department, which I was instructed to prepare for discussion.
I thought we discussed this numerous times, and it was determined that they can't be under the O R I number for the Police Department.
And you went to the civil service meeting, and as I understood it...
It, it, it is an acceptable alternative. Not many communities do it, but they can have their O R I in the Police Department as long as certain structural rules are followed. It's not done in our area by any communities that I can find, but I had the majority of council tell me to prepare it, whether you guys...
The majority of council?
At the time, there was a, a vote on it, and I was instructed to proceed, so... The council, the will of council has changed, that I need to know that.
Well, the will, after certain people, they did.
It was done at a public meeting, and it was a majority vote that, that that's the direction they wanted to pursue. Am I missing something on that?
Right.
All right. Well, let's clarify something then.
Yeah.
The O R I, in terms of the code, was something that was gonna happen while the code enforcement officer is in the police station.
Now, what's happened is he, he would have, we'd have to get him under the zone, and that would cost Borough a lot more money than putting, letting him use the O R I numbers that the police have.
The, the, the reason it would be there, and the only supervision that the, the chief of, or the active officer in charge would have over the code enforcement officer, is the protection of the, the private information that's gathered by the Police Department. So the code enforcement officer using that O R I can access name, address, certain items from the, the, from the police's records. And so the officer in charge is then should make sure that the code officer doesn't get anything more than what the law allows. And then the state police come in every two years to conduct an audit to make sure that those protocols are being followed. The police officer in charge does not direct the activities of the code enforcement officer, does not set the schedule, does not set the salary. It's, it's done as a way to maintain privacy for police information, to give the code enforcement officer some information as allowed by law, but the vast majority, like an active criminal investigation, none of that information would be available to the code officer. So that's kind of the setup. So you're putting the officer in charge of protecting the information that's accessed by the code officer, but not putting him in charge of Alec, what a day it is, because that is not the purpose of the ordinance.
Well, what is the purpose?
And elsewise, then Alec would, if, or, um, he's our current, if, if the code officer is not under the police's number, then the code officer has to get his or her own O R I, which is a completely independent process. And if that officer, if that code officer then leaves or goes, or quits or is fired, uh, the new person does not absorb that new, that O R I. It's a personal thing when you do it at that level, so the new person would have to go through that process all over again. So if it's maintained in the police office, then that doesn't have to happen. So if you replace the code officer, we go back to the officer in charge then protecting the vital information, and then you don't require the code officer to go through all that independent training to know what information is available and not. So that's kind of the theory.
I have a question. I don't understand what's, what's the benefit of doing, putting him in the police office?
To give, to give that person more access to information, but right now, if, 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 if that's not done, the Police Department can't give any information to the code enforcement officer that they might have in the record that would otherwise be available. And I think, I just want people to understand, it's a way to manage private information that's collected by the Police Department. It's not meant to put the officer in charge, in charge of the code officer. That's still the role of council. Council sets the salaries, sets the hours, gives them the direction on what jobs are important to look at, or what projects, or what light is important. So all the traditional roles of council would remain for the code enforcement officer. The one category that the, the officer in charge is responsible for is protection of vital information that the code enforcement officer may have, so...
But why would he need that? Why would he need that? Why would he need that access to anything? In the past, no code enforcement officer needed any of this.
I just think it provides them with more information than they would otherwise have.
But I thought they were only just...
Name, address.
Address, name.
An address, yes.
Certain, well, you might not know where they are, and they might have a report, it's an out-of-town owner. So certain information the police can, and, and they can answer that question better than I. I'm just giving you the, the general concept, because I think people were saying, oh, he's gonna be a police officer. He's not gonna be a police officer. He, he or she will not be a police officer. It's just, they can't access the information under police control, because that's where it's collected, and they're following the same strict regulations that they have to as a department.
And also, just to add, it's, Alec will have limited access. He doesn't, he will not have full access.
All right, you're saying he'll have limited access. We don't even have an officer in Dayton. They are right now to, in, in, in the Police Department right now, so you're saying he's having limited access, and you don't know that?
When he logs into, but they all have their own logins at the computers. When Alec logs, he, Alec can only log in with his user name and password.
And they have vows and reports and investigations in that in the Police Department?
And he has limited access. He can't just go into anything the Police Department has.
So he hasn't had this access up till now, and he's been doing the job?
He doesn't have access to all that information.
My point is, he hasn't been using this information by himself up to now. So now you want him to have a O E R, whatever it is. And then you're saying that he won't have access to certain information? How you know that?
And then it's only... Because that's kind of, well, first of all, that's the legal mandate. If the Police Department has found violating those rules, it's gonna be in significant trouble.
Yeah.
There's a written audit by the police. So... I'm just telling you, I'm working on it. It's, unless council tells me to stop.
Well, you need to stop, 'cause there's only a few people, you said, that always puts in for it, and then the, the council doesn't even know.
I will, I think the record reflects that a majority of council voted to proceed in that direction.
When, when did they vote?
Uh, December, I believe.
I was here in December?
I...
And it wasn't going off?
The last I know, it was supposed to go through, um, the civil service to check things out, to see what the status was. You all went to the meeting with the civil service.
Civil service has nothing to do with it. Civil service has nothing to do with it.
Oh, it doesn't?
It does not. And that's what the direct, that's what the official there who was teaching said, that this can't be done. He just doesn't see it often. And, and those people who are code officers with an ORI through the police department are non-police officers.
But that's not the question. The question was...
I, I attempted to answer your question. I can't be any more specific than that.
But you didn't answer my question.
Well then, I'm sorry. I don't know the answer then.
All right, we'll get on.
Wow, didn't we see the meeting moving on?
Well, I, I have a question. Now, I heard solicitor say that, um, he has access to information that's vital. I've heard that quite a few times. And does council members also have, uh, access to that vital information as he has, as a code enforcement officer?
No.
They're not allowed to?
No, because they aren't, uh, they, they have no statutory ability to gather that information, which is what the ordinance is intended to do, is to allow that.
So a council member shouldn't have access to code enforcement officer's stuff, you're saying?
They should not have access to police information that's not available to anybody other than as authorized by law.
So that brings up this here, I want to read to you, and it says about why the code enforcement officer should not be on council also, for conflict of interest. It's not to bring it up at the center, but it says, in most jurisdictions, including Pennsylvania, a borough council member cannot directly hold a job as a code enforcement officer due to potential conflicts of interest. However, the specific rules may vary depending on local ordinances and state laws, so it's important to consult your municipal office charter and relevant regulations.
The Borough Code allows it for communities under three thousand people. You can be a part-time, you can be an employee of the borough and serve in council. Uh, there's a couple of exceptions, but the code enforcement, one of them would be the zoning officer. That's why Tristan's the zoning officer. Alec can't do that because he sits on council. So the answer to, under our code is because of the small population, we're able to do that.
Borough secretary report?
I have one more question. I'm still not clear as a council member what limited information means. So can someone tell the rest of us what limited information the code enforcement officer would have access to so we know?
Is there more than me in that room?
For, for example.
I don't want an example. I want to know what he'll have access to. We have an officer on the way to explain. Oh, great. They'll have this. They'll know what, they'll know what he can access. Good, thank you.
Okay. Borough secretary report?
Um, I just, we are in the process of our annual audit and two of the loans that wouldn't make the payments on the bank's heavy interest rates incorrect. And I had to make a decision on the spot. So what I did was, and I hope you don't mind, um, the interest rates were not physically higher than five percent. We signed a contract with them. Some of the interest rates were like seven point nine or whatever. So for instance, the one loan that we had out, we overpaid so far eighteen thousand dollars. Instead of them giving us the money back, I told them to apply it to the principal, so the loan would be paid off faster. And they corrected our interest rate and they ensured us that it would not happen again. So that will change the loan payments, like the one loan payment was twenty-five hundred dollars a month and now it's down to twenty-two hundred dollars a month. So that'll help your budget out a little bit.
Mayor's report?
Uh, nothing more.
Code enforcement report?
Um, I'll just read straight what he gave me. Um, for the month of February twenty twenty-five, code was slow as normal. February, February is the slowest month of the year for code due to weather typically. Less people are out and have a tendency to stay indoors, which lessens problems in our neighborhoods. Due to the temporary high demands for my full-time job, I wasn't able to get the numbers for the police report like they are typically reported by the deadline. So please see below. Calls for service seventeen, code violations three. To name a few other things I worked on in February was the following. Studied the new SADO due to the high possibility of use in the near future. Research my SADO certification status and seeing if it needs renewed. Assisted the zoning officer with variance hearing requirements for new home construction scheduled for, scheduled end of March. Um, Pennsylvania dog warden called for assistance on multiple animal complaints. That's ongoing. Watched over the Market Street home demolition across from the firehouse. Made sure that the public and traffic had little danger or adverse effects. Project was carried out safely. This is not a complete list of duties done in February, just some highlights. As always, I want to thank council members for their support and hope for continued support. Again, I apologize for not making it due to mandatory overtime at my full-time job. This month is the first time I've been unable to make it to a meeting. I anticipate being back in April.
Visitors requesting to speak, FBLA, state competition.
That's me. I'm Vicki Cooper. I'm the FBLA advisor down at the high school. I'm also a teacher so I like to do visual aids. I know I only get three minutes, so I will talk faster. Will probably be extras, just leave them at the end of the tables. Um, I have forty-four members currently in FBLA. Um, that's Future Business Leaders of America and, um, this is a really, really busy time. We're busy all the time. March gets crazy. I would have brought some of my members with me, but March, um, like I said, gets crazy with the competition. They don't really like me right now. So they don't want to hang with me, so I didn't bring them. It's just me talking tonight. Uh, for the state competition in April, we have, um, kids who will be competing. We actually, forty-four members, twenty-eight of our members qualified to go to state and compete. There will probably be about thirty-five hundred people at the state conference. Uh, twenty of the kids are going to go, are paying to go. And we have a few events that the kids are going to present. So we have graphic design, public speaking, and property speaking, sales presentation, and website design. I try to get them as ready as I can. I'm not an expert in all those areas. So I'm trying to get them ready to compete against kids from much bigger schools, from schools that actually have graphic design classes, public speaking classes, sales classes. We don't have any of that. They get me. So I am asking for your help. I am sure there are experts. You know, if I was a football coach and asked for help, I'd get all kinds of people come out and want to help me. If I was a baseball coach, all kinds of people want to help me. I'm asking for help with academics. I don't get anybody who wants to help me. So I am hoping somebody in here has some expertise in one of these areas and is willing to come and work individually with my students. At some point next week, we can work around your schedule and theirs. Fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes just to look at what they have and give them some ideas and ways that they can make it better. Uh, if you don't have expertise, we're also looking for people to come in and judge. And it's fake judging. It's just so they can get out in front of as many people as they can get in front of. You don't have to have any knowledge at all. I'll give you the, show you what, what they look at. You watch them for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes and then you tell them, hey, this is what you can improve upon. I really like this. I think this was a little eh and you could fix that. Um, so I listed some times there that we're looking for judges. So, you know, if you have expertise or if you're willing to come in and judge, I put my email down there. Uh, my phone number is on the back as well. Um, any help we can get. Again, I know if I was a sports person, I'd have no trouble getting help at all. Um, I'd like these kids to see that academics are as important as sports in this town. Um, we don't see that too often. Kids are really, really, really frustrating. Which will bring me to the next part, if you flip it to the back. We have a big event coming up. The kids are paying, the twenty kids who are going to states are paying six hundred dollars. They're raising that money on their own. If any of them make it to nationals, it will cost them at least two thousand dollars. My son has gotten to go the last two years. He fundraises like crazy, but it'll be at least two thousand dollars per student. So we are having a golf tournament on May tenth, um, first ever. And we are looking for teams of golfers. I know golf, but I would almost bet money there is somebody in this room who golfs, or who knows somebody who golfs. So if you can just spread the word. Uh, we're looking for sponsors as well. And a sponsor doesn't have to be a big amount, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty bucks, we'll take it. My kids are frustrated. We've done this again three years in a row. We get one or two sponsors. We just saw baseball and got twenty-five. Are we telling our kids that academics are not important? Again, ten dollars. We would be thrilled if five people sent us ten bucks because again, we get nothing. Uh, but I'm not just asking for things. So those last two things I just asked for, if you look at the last thing I have on there, community service. Uh, last year I had almost sixty members. Entire year, sixty members. My members did four hundred hours of community service in the U. This year I have forty-four. We are not done yet and we have eight hundred hours that we are giving back to the community. What we are looking for, for community service, we want to do a big community service project. We need some ideas. So even if you can't help us monetarily and you can't help us with judging, if you can think of a big community service project that the kids could help plan, that they would start over the summer and be able to work on each month and kind of build and learn from the process, my phone number and my email are there. So we have done food, this year reflected, um, over two tons of food during our two-month food job process. Uh, we could do that again. I know there's a food need in the community, but I'm sure there are some other needs as well. So if you can think of anything, send the ideas to us. And, you know, eight hundred hours, next year we go for fifteen hundred hours. I've got kids that want to do stuff. So we're not just begging you for money. We'll help you out as well. But money's nice too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laurie.
Anyway, um, here's a little bit while we got, got going the last couple of weeks. Uh, the River Trail down there, Patrick brought this to my attention and said, um, Reese Hobbler here had ten thousand dollar grant aid for trail maintenance and, and working on trails. So I applied for that money for the Mount Union Borough and it's up for review on March the twelfth, um, at their meeting. So there's other, two other applicants. So obviously I think it will probably get some money from that. Uh, Sue Penny was down at our, um, town hall meeting Monday night, kind of explained how this worked with the money that's, uh, brought in by the amusement taxes put on in Honeycomb County. And they, they earmarked that ten thousand dollars for trail repair. Am I saying this right, Patrick?
Yeah.
So, uh, what we decided to do, uh, we formed a little group that on the twenty-second of March, uh, it's nice to have money to do things with. So, uh, I bought, uh, some chicken, it was real cheap last week. We plugged Patrick's freezer back in, we filled it up with leg quarters and we're gonna have a chicken barbecue on the twenty-second to raise some money. Uh, it's gonna be in front of my event center, so you can stop there and pick up your meal. We're gonna do leg quarters, some sides, a roll, and it's gonna be a ten dollar donor. The money we use to go towards bringing, uh, the trail back into the Shaver gift, whatever grant money we get to put stone back on there. I've agreed to donate some of my equipment and my time to help put this stone on the trail and, and get the river trail back. So I think with your organization that you have, we can fulfill a lot of our plans, uh, by cleaning up, I guess there's benches down there, maybe cleaning up the benches, doing whatever we need to, to improve this trail. And also, uh, we talked about the parks in general, how can we clean them up? There's nothing better in my eyes to do than for the children that play at the parks to help clean it up and then they might decide that if we wouldn't have thrown this garbage around, we wouldn't have had to pick it up. So I think that would be a great plan for Dawn. Uh, Dawn's kind of heading the park thing up and that, that's gonna fall into place. So I think we can all help to do this. And, and I'm not beyond, and I'm not talking just myself, but on our monies that we raised from, uh, the, the chicken sale that we're gonna have, so we have some money to work with. And we're talking about monies that we have all the help and we need to buy water for drinks or we want to buy a hot dog for while we're, while we're working down there, that we have a little bit of money to do this. So I would be, uh, I, I think maybe we might be able to share some of our money with you if your people shares their time with us and...
Oh, I can get them to share time.
Okay. So we, we can do that. But I, I donated my, uh, my kitchen to kick, and kicking chicken to prepare the sides for our chicken dinner. And I think that it's gonna be very profitable for us as a group. And I, the, the biggest thing that I feel good about is the unity of the people of Mount Union. Uh, as our monthly, uh, meeting, uh, you know, at the town hall meeting has been getting better every month. And we have a group of people that works one hundred percent positive together. So, uh, we just want to keep that going. And this River Walk Trail, uh, if we can get three hundred tons of stone, I'll be more glad to put it down. Uh, we got people who run the rollers, we'll roll it in and, you know, bring it back to what it should be.
Thank you. Nathan?
Hi, my name is Nathan Query. Uh, as many of you already know, um, I am in the process of passing around a petition to allow for the serving of wine and liquor in restaurants in Mount Union. Now, to be clear, beer is already allowed to be sold. We have a beer distributor, um, in the flat. And also liquor is able to be sold as we have a liquor store on Water Street. And yet, also, I want to say, beer is allowed to be served. You can go to Bellows, you can go to the American Legion Stone House, you can go to the Sons Billy, you can order a beer and they will give it to you. However, if you ask for a glass of wine, if you ask for a mixed drink, they are not going to serve that to you because they are not allowed, given the current state laws regarding the serving of alcohol in the borough of Mount Union.
Isn't that a borough law, not a state law?
That is a state law. That's a state law by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. I spent about, I spent about two and a half hours on the phone with a licensing, um, licensing specialist who is an expert on the laws concerning alcohol in the state of Pennsylvania. And she, and did she explain it to me? She also, um, referred me to the website and helped me navigate that website to find the information in black and white, um, to provide the evidence and the credibility. Um, if anyone has any questions about this, I would...
I think what his question was, it's a borough law that we can't have liquor in the borough. The state provides a license, but we're not allowed to have it in the borough. That's what your petition is to, um, put it on the ballot to get it voted on, that we want to bring, make the borough wet, which we're allowed to bring a license in to sell that alcohol.
Yes. Now, that does not mean that if this passes, I have to get two hundred fifty-one signatures. I need one or two more signatures to, for it to be on the referendum on May twentieth, the May twentieth primary. It will be a question, a referendum question on the ballot. However, I'm gonna say that if this does pass with the voters, if you have plus one vote, you win. The last time that this was tried was in nineteen ninety-seven. They tried to allow for the serving of liquor in the borough of Mount Union and it was, um, it was denied. They, um, they got it on the ballot, they lost one ninety-one to one thirty-one. I have talked to, um, a few towns. Uh, one of them is Roaring Spring. There are about a hundred, a hundred and fifty, uh, people difference in population from Mount Union. They went from completely dried to completely wet in the year of twenty twenty.
Can you hurry a little bit, Nathan?
Okay.
The only thing I, I want to clarify, if I'm correct, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is as of right now, you can take a bottle of wine into a restaurant, uh, it's a bring your own bottle kind of thing. You can do that at Checkers. I don't know if you could do it at Bellows since they sell other alcoholic, alcohol products.
Typically, you can't bring alcohol into a licensed facility. So I have twenty years in food and beverage, you can't bring alcohol into a facility that has a license.
That's what I thought. So Bellows you wouldn't be able to since they sell alcohol, since they sell beer products.
And actually with the population we have, it's not like bars are gonna spring up everywhere because licenses are dictated by population.
So, I mean, the Legion, Bellows if they apply, probably, but you're not gonna see a bunch of bars pop up.
Hello?
I want to say, uh, I mean, I have been keeping track of my time here, trying to hold it to three minutes. Um, Mount Union hopes to be a tourist town someday. And the East Broad Top Railroad hopes to come to Mount Union someday. And I believe that they're very sincere and they're very knowledgeable about what they're doing. And when they, we will get the tourists here if that train comes in, but the challenge is, are we gonna be able to give these people something to keep from here when they get here? And I, I recognize and understand that this is a moral issue, and yet I see it as an economic one. And, and businesses in Mount Union already have enough of a struggle in surviving. And so I think it's time to take the brakes off of those impediments. Um, the borough manager of Gettysburg told me that, um, they, they have a whole list of restaurants and bars that serve all three types of alcohol. You go into those places, he told me, you're watching these people, they're, they're drinking a martini, and they're sipping it. They're not in there drinking shot after shot after shot. They're having two glasses of wine and they're having... If you have any other questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Marsha, sure, you want to add one question instead of our...
I'm sorry, I, I think some public as well as I wanted to know, what specific info, limited information would the code enforcement officer have access to if you were permitted in unlimited access, um, to have, to be under the police's ORI?
Yeah, so basically, the information would be name, address, date of birth, and that's pretty much it.
Oh, that's it?
Yep. Just basically demographics and what's on your driver's license.
Okay. That's what I, that's what we were here, thank you.
There's a question over there.
Then why, wha, what's the need to do it? That's what I, I don't understand. What's the need to put the money in doing all this stuff that they're doing, and the background and all that, for the lawyer to spend all this money to do something for, something that was never a need before? What's the need?
So, basically, the need now is that the state of Pennsylvania has changed their laws on ORI numbers and how their, their RAM for police departments and everything else. Um, in the past, this borough has not done it correctly as far as code enforcement goes, on how to issue fines and citations for violating, uh, code ordinances. So, when we were audited by Pennsylvania State Police last year, because we get it audited every two years, the state trooper that came basically told us that he saw the issue with how our code enforcement officer has basically been mimicking our ORI, but not the proper procedure on how to do so. Um, the need is basically then the code enforcement officer would have the ability to enforce our ordinances if there's violations. So, we as police department can do it, and then also the code enforcement officer can do it.
So would he be able to make arrests?
Not, I mean, you're being cited, it's a non-traffic citation. He would not have handcuffs, he would not go out and arrest anybody. It's basically just filing a non-traffic, just like a traffic ticket through the courts and they go through that.
Who does it now?
We do. Um, and the problem with that is, is obviously, you know, if we do the citation for a code enforcement violation, and that means if, let's say, they go to the judge and they, they take a hearing on that, we then have to go and testify to that, even though we weren't the initial contact, it was the code enforcement officer that made that solid violation, cited for it. So then we would have to make contact code enforcement officer, get the backstory of what occurred, then we would have to go and testify. So, you're bringing police officers into something that is not really under our realm of responsibilities as a police officer.
But it has been for all the past.
Yes, but not done correctly.
So, do I, I think I remember, and I could be wrong, that there were eighty such cases all last year.
That's correct.
So that would be what the police would have to go to these hearings for? It, as, as usually last year as an example?
That's correct.
Versus the code enforcement officer.
Okay, but I, I'm not, if I remember correctly, the police officer were the one that wrote those tickets. The parking tickets is what she's talking about. What was she talking about?
Code, code violations.
Oh, the code, oh, yeah.
One question, uh, maybe you could explain to the, the group here tonight, you explained this to me, that if Alex is called on a violation, uh, and I asked this question, why would you need, as a code enforcement officer, you, if I can't write a citation? His comment to me was, I can't go to work. And I said, what do you mean? It should be forty-five days to sixty days before you write a deci, to write a citation. You told me that if he don't write the citation within thirty days, the statute of limitation runs out, and he can't cite a person.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, tell me something, do you think that his job, that is completely backwards from the way it should be? If you're a homeowner, and I give you, hey, get in by your dress, I'm gonna cite you. First thing about going in and telling you that and give you a citation, you're really gonna piss me off the first day. So if you give him fifteen days or thirty days, and he don't comply, then you go back with, write him a letter or whatever you may do, this is your occupation, you're getting paid to do it. And then work with the people, and maybe in forty-five days, if you don't comply, we're gonna cite you, we're gonna take you to District Justice, and now we're gonna fine you. That's the part that I've been saying all along, this is all bullshit, it's all backwards. I understand, his job, write the citation. The guy was speeding today, write the citation, give him thirty days. You know, if you don't write the citation, don't work. But for Alex's job, he should not be writing citations in the first thirty days. That's bullshit.
Just to clarify, Dwight, I mean, I, I explained this to you before, the thirty-day mark is a state.
I understand that.
So, so obviously, it would be, it'd be no different if, you know, us, if, if the code enforcement officer comes up to us and says, hey, you know, I, I saw a violation, I'm gonna cite them for it. Um, and, you know, it comes to the point where us, as police officers, are gonna write those citations. We still have those, we have to do it within the thirty days, just like the traffic ticket. Any sum, any summary offense has a thirty-day statute of limitations on it.
But the, the part that I'm saying is, I think when them ordinances were right, and he's enforcing an ordinance of the town. And that, that ordinance was, there's a part there that's upside down, in my eyes. It should be, the code enforcement officer is gonna go out here, he's gotta work with these people, he's gotta give them a chance to comply. You don't write the citation, but then the first day you go to the, to cite. That's what pisses everybody off. And, you know, go talk to the people.
What do you think, solicitor?
He's gonna call you, you know, and, you know, I agree.
I don't have a point, you know, I'm just saying I was instructed to do something. I'm just telling you, generally, I was doing it, I didn't need to, because all this stuff, all this is gonna have to be debated when an ordinance is presented, so you're gonna go through the same information again.
She's asking, she's asking.
I, I got a criminal question for you. So we have Alex here, I'm, I'm going criminal. And say Alex is someplace, and he happens to stumble across maybe some drug paraphernalia, and then you want to get involved, and I see a conflict of interest here. Say he sees something while he's at somebody's place.
Far as what kind of conflict?
I just want to conflict.
I don't...
If, if he, he would go somewhere for an ordinance, and he happens to see
Right.
say marijuana, any, any drug paraphernalia, then he's, then we're involved in some criminal stuff.
I understand.
And he's going counsel.
But it's no different than any, than a random civilian who found a drug paraphernalia.
Yes, it is, he's a code, and he's going counsel.
But he does not have arrest of power, power to do that.
That's my point, so you don't have to be, you don't need to go there.
But that's the thing too, like, if, if he would, like, he saw a drug paraphernalia, he wouldn't tell us, we would apply for a search warrant, we have to do the same procedure, so it's no different.
And I, I just want to say for counsel, I want to be very transparent. We need to talk, I don't care, you know, I like that one, and it's talking about like... This is about the people, Mount Union, and this is about right and wrong, and not people voting, because I like Alex. This is about business, that's what it should be about.
Yes, and I like having somebody that makes sure that things are up to code, to make sure they're safe, have people take care of their properties, because you'd be the first one to call if somebody didn't cut their grass right next to you.
I think we're all in agreement, I think the process, I think the process that Dwight mentioned is, you know, let's, let's offer them education, let's offer them resources if you know any, give them a timeline, and then get to that.
Yeah, gotta talk to them.
So, isn't there any reason that, so, the grass, I'll use as an example, grass on mode, a letter from the borough buying them, you have fifteen days to clear it up. And at the end of fifteen days, if it's not cleared up, then you write the citation, and he's got thirty days to do it. That could extend the window.
That's usually how things work. At least you start with some conversation.
Yeah, well, Alex needs to answer the questions, and he isn't here, so. Now we're going to Daryl.
Is this your agenda, is this your agenda part?
Yeah.
Listen, I'm, I'm Daryl Francis, and, um, I just wanted to know, I put a complaint in against Alex and his brother, and like submitted a formal complaint in writing, and to this day, I've never had any correspondence in return via a letter or a phone call to know where they stood at. But I do understand there was a couple executive sessions that probably discussed about it. Um, there's a lot of things here, because I think if the situation were reversed, it turned out different. Because I ended up with my complaint going to the police department. I don't know how the complaint ended up there, because I thought I had one copy of my complaint to be given to you, and one to the president of personnel at the time, with Cheryl. But I was told that with investigation being done, so I went to the police department. And I don't know how many people are aware of this, Bill, that has searched this, but it was more like an interrogation as opposed to an investigation. But I do recall a similar incident when I think Nicole and Cheryl had a disagreement here, and a complaint was filed. And it was handled here in council, I believe, when Cheryl asked for an apology, which Nicole gave. I think she asked for reprimand, but it was voted against. So I'm wondering why mine was handled differently. Why did mine go from a complaint to counsel to an investigation by the police department?
And ours went to, oh, we got arrested.
I don't even know how a copy of that got to the police department.
Oh, you mean, you got arrested?
Yeah, oh, I didn't, I didn't send the copy to the police.
No, I didn't say you did, I'm just saying somehow, that's what Officer Smith said. He came, uh, Alex and Cole became and gave him a copy, because he does have a copy of my complaint in his computer, he said. So I'm wondering, how did I get that? How did he get that? And why was my complaint handled differently than the Nicole and Cheryl incident? And they were very similar, you know? I want someone to give me answers to that.
You want a, a public apology from him?
No, I want answers to why mine was handled differently.
He wants to know why his was handed to the police and not one of them.
Yeah, why did we know which one was handled differently? We don't know who handed it to the police.
No, he's asking why, was no investigation by borough council of his complaint.
The reason is just because that the, the complaint between Cheryl and, uh, Nicole is a member of, two members of council. And we have no legal...
Well, he's one, not a member, but he's a member of council, I'm a resident here.
But the point is, is that the, if, if someone wants to call a motion to reprimand him for his behavior that night, they could do that, and council will have to vote on it. Because the only remedy we have is to basically say, we don't like how you handled that. As a fellow councilperson, we have no legal authority to remove Alex from his office.
But he's an employee.
Yeah, that's why...
And that's why, and that's why there was an exec, that's why there was an executive session to discuss personnel as a part-time employee, and that was done.
And I would never, like I said, I was never notified of what your decision was.
And I believe there was, there was instructions for you to be notified, but it hasn't been done yet.
Yeah, it's in progress.
Say it again.
It's in progress, it's...
It wasn't, but the determination of what the outcome is?
Reporting back to you of what council...
Because you know, by, by, by the borough's codes of Pennsylvania, I should have been responding to within ten to fifteen days, I believe.
You, you, you point to me a place in state law or borough code that says that we have to get back to you in fifteen days, and let me see that.
Okay, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
I know, you don't know.
I do believe I read that. It's in the, I have it on this here, I have to go through what I read.
Well, you, you let me see it, then, I want, I want to be aware that that exists.
I, I got, I, I, I want to say right now, so I think about two years ago, Joan and I were council people, Alex was acting, whatever he was, president or whatever he was, he told us to get out. It cost me fifteen hundred dollars to go to a, uh, magistrate for a hearing, to see the judge. But anyway, it cost me fifteen hundred dollars. We were council too. And he, and, and the cops came over and charged us.
How can you be charged with that?
Yeah, but she won't charge us.
In addition to that.
So my answer, well, my question is still, how did it go from a common complaint to an investigation? That has not been answered.
Your response. Your response. Okay, well, it has some progress to, a lot of...
So it takes this long, like, like I said, you had two, different sessions, and I'm sort of discussing it, all right? Because I remember personally it was supposed to be on the fifth. It was delayed for two weeks, and I think according to the code again, if we do delay, we can probably push to the next day, not two weeks later. That's in the broken code also, I think I read that, I'll bring that also to the next meeting. All right? This is what I'm thinking, this is just me thinking that I think the need would put back the buy time to help with the defense before you gave me your outcome. And I'm not very happy with how things progressed.
Okay, fully noted. Okay, you see, you're...